Good evening. Welcome to our April Board Meeting. Thank you all for coming. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand and join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Remain standing, please. I'd like to ask Pastor Paula Canby to come up. She's from the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, and she's going to lead us in a word of prayer.
Let us pray. Dear God, come and be with us this evening. We pray for all the teachers who work with the students each and every day. We pray for the administrators that help the schools to run smoothly, for the office staff that provide support, for the counselors who provide emotional support, and the maintenance staff who keeps our buildings safe, for the custodians that keep things clean, and for the children, so that they may learn and be prepared to move on into the world that you have for them. And please be with the parents as they support teachers and children. And dear God, tonight especially, be with the school board members. Give them wisdom and strength to make the decisions as they oversee the work that's being done each day. May the Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face to shine upon you and give you his peace. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Canby. This time, I'd like to call up Kate Miller. Kate, let me tell you a little bit about Kate. Kate's our student speaker tonight, and she's going to talk on self-discipline. She's a fourth grader at Mina. She's an AB Honorable Student, an active member of the Mina Green Team. She was on UIL for Music Memory. She placed first in that local competition. Kate also participated in Advanced Fourth Grade Writing Club. Outside of school, Kate's involved in Rockney 4H. She showed her lamb in Bastrop Area Livestock Show and received fourth place. She enjoys riding horses, drawing, and riding in her free time. Are Scott and Trina Miller here? If they are, we'd like you to stand to be recognized.
Okay. My name is Kate Miller, and I'm here today to talk to you about self-discipline. It's such a great honor to be here. And here we go. Okay, self-discipline. Self-discipline is a rather hard trait. As in hard, I mean not a lot of people have the ability or reliability to have this trait. This trait can mean lots of things to different people. However, to me, it means having the ability to be reliable and responsible in fulfilling challenging tasks. If you have discipline, you take charge of a reliable personality. Many people look at a person by their actions. After all, actions speak louder than words. So when someone sees you taking a task in hand, and you are being responsible enough to make it turn out better than it was before, then you are a self-disciplined person. Fulfilling this honorable trait means you probably check your every move carefully. To me, this is what self-discipline means. I hope you agree.
Thank you very much, Kate. We appreciate you representing Mina Elementary. I know your principal's over there grinning from ear to ear. All right, Steve, you want to introduce your student advisory council members?
Yes, Mr. Allen, I will. Before I do that, let me do something. You know, we have great days every day in our profession, and today was just one of those days that just seemed to lay out and just have a blessing one after another. And I was sharing this with Molly before the board meeting that, and I think it bears mentioning, first of all, I got to start my morning at Circa, at the Colorado River Collegiate Academy, and got to address the 58 freshmen who are starting our inaugural class in the Early College High School Program. And it was a great meeting. I went over there to brag on them mainly and talk about the wonderful things that I've been hearing all over Bastrop and across the state about what they're doing there, because they are really setting themselves apart. Of the 58 students who are in the freshman class at Circa, we have close to 85% today that are either taking their first college class or have passed the TSI and are eligible to take their first college class. Some of them missed the time to take it in the spring semester, they'll take it this summer. So our expectation is that by this summer, virtually 100% of those 58 students will be taking their first college or second college class as freshmen. Folks, that's significant. It really is. And so the folks over at Early College High School Program or Colorado River Collegiate Academy, which we call Circa, are doing an outstanding job. I was also able to just get some feedback and input from them, because I don't meet with them as often as I do with my student advisory councils at Bastrop and Cedar Creek High School, but I'm going to start doing that next year. Then we rolled into kicking off the job fair. We had a luncheon for the, many of the employers will be here on May 8th and 9th. May 8th and 9th are significant in Bastrop, because on the 8th, that is specifically a career and job fair for Bastrop ISD. We will have every one of our juniors and seniors in attendance at the convention center, and they will have access to anywhere from 50 to 75 employers, some from the local area, many from Austin, some nationally. I've heard that Google representatives will be there and other employers. So we were able to kick that off, and we're looking forward to that job fair on the 8th for all of our juniors and seniors. And then I got to go over to the PAC, the Rotary Club. Bastrop was holding their meeting at the PAC, and Les Hudson and many of their students from the Career and Technology Programs, most notably the Culinary Arts, they helped prepare and serve the lunch to the Rotary. And we were able to highlight that program and so many others in our Career and Technology offerings, including robotics. The robotics team was over there with their robot, and just got a lot of great feedback about the wonderful things that are going on in the school district. And that leads me into introducing some very special students to me. I get to meet with these students once a month at both high schools. Let's see if we got one who hadn't walked in yet. Luis, maybe he'll show up a little late. Cory just got here, I'm glad Cory's here. I want to introduce two students from Bastrop High School, sophomore Cory Sanders and senior Destiny Higgins. And I'm going to let them talk a little bit about themselves in a second. And then we have a senior at Cedar Creek High School who is here to represent their student advisory council, Ben Clements. And let's give him a round of applause real quick. I tell the students when they are invited to come speak to the board that they may get asked a lot of questions, or they may get asked none. And so I always try to give them an opportunity to tell us a little bit about themselves. And Cory, even though you're a sophomore, I know you've already got your eyes on the future, so I'm going to ask you, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, and what's your experience on the councils like, and then maybe what you plan on doing even though it's a couple of years down the road when you get out of high school.
Okay, well, I'm Cory Sanders. This is my first year on the board, and it's, first let me say it's an honor to be here. And I'm a little nervous, you know? Didn't know I was going to get past the mic. But what we do in the student advisory council is we discuss what needs to be changed, what needs to be worked on, and things we could just make better at the Bastrop High School. You know, my first year, I was shy, wasn't really ready to talk. And you know, Mr. Allen, he asked me to come here for a reason, and that was to represent the student advisory council. And I'm going to be here for the long run. And I'm ready to change Bastrop.
Great Cory.
Thank you.
One more thing. I know you're a sophomore, but I also know how sharp you are, and I know you've got an eye to the future. What are you thinking you want to do when you get out of high school?
I want to play D1 football.
D1 football, very good. Do you have any schools in mind?
Texas.
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's great. Thanks Cory, I appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, Destiny, your turn.
I'm Destiny Higgins. I'm a senior at Bastrop High School. I've been on the council for four years, and I've enjoyed every year of it. I'm a very vocal person, and on this council, I'm able to be a voice for our school, and I'm very, very fortunate to be a part of it.
Well, I'm even more fortunate to have had you on there for four years. It's a blessing to have Destiny on my council. And Destiny, I know you've got plans, and you've told me about them. Tell everybody else what you're doing.
After graduation, I plan on attending Texas A&amp;M at Corpus Christi to major in political science. And after that, I plan on attending grad school at Texas A&amp;M at College Station, and I want to go to law school to be a family court lawyer.
All right. Way to go, Destiny.
Thank you.
Ben, your turn.
All right. Well, my name is Ben Clements. I go to Cedar Creek High School. I have been on the committee for, this is my second year. I came from Del Valley my sophomore year and got thrown onto the committee, but it was all right. It's a new experience.
That could sound like a bad thing, you got thrown on.
No, it was good. They definitely, I didn't really notice, I felt like, why am I on the committee? I'm just here. But you'll need to learn about the school and see the difference that we can make in the school. After high school, I plan on going on a two-year mission for my church, and then come back and go to college.
Very good. Great, Ben. April 29th, we, I'm actually going to have, we're going to have a joint meeting with both student advisory councils. They like this. They get together, Cedar Creek and Bastrop, and we take them to a local restaurant. The board is invited, and the administrative team, and they all get to meet together and talk about the differences and the similarities of the two high schools, what they've got accomplished through the year in the council. So we're all looking forward to that luncheon on the 29th. Last thing I'll say about that, we have submitted a proposal. We did this four years ago, and we're going to pick some other students and some board members. We've submitted a proposal. I expect it to be granted to do a presentation at the annual Tassby Joint Convention in Austin later this fall, and where we can highlight for people across the state what's going on in our student advisory council, most notably, the fact that this is one of the only districts where the board has the insight and is forward-thinking enough to have students in advisory to them at their regular board meetings. So I applaud the board for doing that. I want to make sure everybody understands that. So, Mr. Allen?
Well, next. Going to do a little recognition. All right. You want to start that?
I'll start it, I'll let you take it from there. You know, we welcome our board members when they are, we canvass the votes and we give the oath of office. We do that each time in May. This year, we're going to do that. We didn't have to have an election. It's the second year in a row that we have not had the need for a board election, which is significant in many ways. And one of the notable ways is it saves a district anywhere from $16,000 to $20,000 in fees to not have to run an election. But it also, I think, gives an indication that there's a lot of stability on the board, and people in the community are looking to us, continuing to do great things. We'll be welcoming our new board member, Kelly Seacats, in May when she's giving the oath of office. And she's in attendance tonight. Kelly, wave to everybody, thank you. The reason we had a spot for Kelly to sign up is because we have a very good friend to Bastrop ISD and a member of this board who has chosen not to run again, but we want to make sure we give him specific and due recognition for the service to our students over the last three years as a board member. And I think it also bears noting that long before he was a board member, he's been a great supporter of Bastrop ISD. His dad served as a board member for many years. He's got kids in our school district. He loves the community, and he loves our school district, and he's shown that in the decisions he's made as a board member for the last three years. So we want to give due recognition and due appreciation to outgoing board member, Mr. David Long.
I want to say just a couple of things. I've got to spend a lot of time with David over the past several years, but more importantly, over the past three years, there's a lot of meetings that we go to that you guys aren't at. We go to a lot of trainings. We cover our CE hours every year. We do some closed sessions, depending on the topics. David Long is a solid, solid individual, and will be missed on this board. I'm still mad at him a little bit. Nothing against Kelly, I think Kelly's going to bring a lot to the table, but David Long has been a great board member, and will be missed.
David, thanks for everything you do. I'll tell you, before you even ran for school board, I think we asked you about five years in a row before you ever committed. But just his volunteer work in this community, and graduated from Bastrop High School, lived here all his life, works up in Austin, brought a lot of experience and knowledge from different districts that you saw up around the Austin area, which I know definitely helped move this district forward. And still to this day, and I even know after next month, David still rolls up his sleeves, gets after it, gives back to this community, and really loves it. So David, thank you for all your time, and we're going to be calling on you.
Thank you.
So I'll read this real quick. For your service to the community as a member of the Bastrop Independent School District, Board of Trustees, by word and deed, your presence has enriched the lives of BISD students and served as an example for all. David Long. Okay, more recognitions.
A lot of recognition tonight, and it's one of our favorite things to do, and we're going to get on with it, because we have a lot of kids that are anxious to come show off. They're waiting out there in the foyer, they want to come see us, and we want to see them. First, before we get to some of our students, we want to thank a group of adults, much like what we just praised David, and David's been very involved with these efforts as well, in the next form of recognition. We have, as I've said many times, both during board meetings and to the media and all over the state of Texas, I brag on our education foundation. For this size district, for the amount of money, for the efforts that are put forth to bring back directly to our classrooms in the former teacher mini-grants, innovative teacher mini-grants, is phenomenal for a district of our size. On an evening in late January, as they do each year, there's a committee of the Bastrop Education Foundation called the Sportsman's Committee, and they put what's called, together what's called the Sportsman's Event. And this event has been going on for some eight to nine years. Started out in a different form under Ducks Unlimited, and when Ducks Unlimited said we couldn't keep the money local, the folks here, many local people, including the gentleman to my right, and David, and James, and so many others, said, well, we're going to keep the money local, and we're going to put together our own committee and our own efforts and our event, and we're going to call it the Sportsman's Event. And since that time, to date, they have now raised over a million dollars and given it directly back to Bastrop ISD to put into our classrooms. That's a phenomenal amount. So we want to make sure that publicly, we thank the folks in BEF, we thank the folks in the Sportsman's Committee, and just, as a representative, obviously as a superintendent, as a representative to, from everybody in the school district, from our administrative team, from all the Service Center employees, and every employee at each campus, we just want to say thank you. We had the Price Patrol just recently, had two different teams go out, one in the western feeder pattern, one in the east, and gave out in excess of $150,000 in teacher mini-grants just this year alone. So I'm looking forward to seeing the video that was put together, be put together for that. I believe we might already have it posted, or if we not, we'll have it very soon, but it just shows the excitement and all the wonderful things that are going on. You got it, John? Is that the cue up?
Yeah.
Hey, I liked it. Go ahead. I'll go with it.
Wrote a couple grants for the same thing to other organizations, and I didn't get it, and so I was really, I just feel so excited when I saw the Price Patrol come in. So I'm really happy for my kids. And again, newspaper, they have to have the newer computers to run the software that they need to design the paper with.
I like how we have better computers, we can get better work done for next year, and I'm proud for Miss Biddy getting a grant.
We specifically ask for grant initiatives that are above and beyond what we're doing in the normal course of our instructional day, and Bastrop ISD teachers have stepped up as usual each year and come up with outstanding uses for this donated money.
Teachers are very excited about what they're doing here in Bastrop, being very innovative with their classroom, and we're pleased to support them. BEF has now raised over a million dollars that's gone directly into the classroom settings, and we are so proud of that accomplishment, and being able to provide that to our teachers, and most of all, to the students.
Of course, the teachers, and those families who see these generous gifts that were made available through the Sportsman's Committee and the BEF, the Bastrop Education Foundation. I just hope that the folks, our generous donors, know, and I can represent the rest of our teachers, our 1,300 employees, all of our folks, and that's about 10,000 students, I can be there and say simply, thank you. I'm so blessed to have such generous people in our community.
It's really giving back to the community. We're helping to produce productive citizens that are going to go back into the community and give back themselves. So thank you very much to the Education Foundation and to everyone who gives annually to help support our future.
Couldn't tell.
That's good news for you.
These fabulous people have given us, they have given us $20,000.
We have children with all types of varying levels of reading, and we want to meet them where they are and propel them forward, and we have the books. Thanks to the BEF generous supporters, we have the books in English and in Spanish. And when someone contributes to that, there's not a measure of things that we can give
Thank you. Is Renee here?
I was going to choke up, yes, she's back there.
Renee, thank you for putting that video together, it was outstanding. Thank you. Ashley, you've been a little bit involved with this, you want to say anything?
Absolutely. It's been an honor and a privilege to be able to work with such an awesome group. This is truly a team effort. I mean, I put this committee up against anybody in the state, and even the United States, in being able to do things. And I mean, when you can bring in over a couple hundred thousand dollars in one night and clear $175,000, $76,000 in one night in Bastrop, Texas at the convention center, that's a big deal. And we only started meeting about three months before. And it's just been growing and growing, and it's very rewarding. It's a great team effort, especially with the Education Foundation Board. They do a great job of reviewing the grants, awarding the grants. We're good at nudging people for money and getting them there and putting on a great banquet. And the Education Foundation is a good teammate in regards to studying those grants, and I think that process has really come along. But most important, it's kind of like, you know, winning a CMT award. This is about the fans. This is about, this is about the community. I mean, if you're there buying raffle tickets, we had two businesses in town combined spend $48,000 in January, just two, okay? Our live auction was over $101,000. And so this was just amazing, the support from the community, from the businesses, from the people. People that buy, just if it's a $20 ticket, a $100 ticket, or spend a lot of money. And so it's really great, and like I said, it's a true, true team effort.
Thank you.
And something here.
Absolutely.
As the past president of the Bastrop Education Foundation, officially, there's anywhere between 20 to 30 members of the board. It's a working board. They read the grants, they go out and do the call for grants in schools, they evaluate the teacher recommendations, they do research on the grants, they sit together in this room. It's kind of like a cage match, they lock them in here, and they don't let them out until they've decided how they're going to, what grants they're going to fund and what they're not. And they take the job very seriously, because they have a strong realization that the foundation exists only because it's community support. And they're trying to be the most intentional and careful stewards of this support and supporting, then working with the district, with a great working relationship with the district, and with the people on the Sportsman's Committee. And, you know, most of the year, there's about 24 people on the Bastrop Education Foundation, but for about three months a year, there's about 100. And that's all those committee members who work to put that event together. And we couldn't be what we are and do the things that we do as a foundation without the support of this community and this committee. So thank you.
Thanks Billy. Thank you very much. As we said, we have a lot of recognition tonight. We're going to get to our kids. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have any members of the committee that are in the audience? If everybody who's on the committee, please stand. Frank, see some others.
Thank you. This month is National Library Month, and I thought it was very fitting that we had one of our very special people who's a librarian on that video, getting so excited about the gift from the Sportsman's Committee and the BEF. And John Corb is going to help us out. We have recognition of National Library Month.
Mr. Allen, members of the board, tonight I have the honor of recognizing the district library media specialists as part of National School Library Month. As the son of a school librarian, this task carries a unique weight for me. I was blessed as a child to have a mother who taught me the joy of reading long before I ever attended elementary school. As a result, in elementary school, I could read and write proficiency, and I enjoyed school because of that. Of course, not all of our students have a mom who is a librarian. My experience is not the norm for most of our students in the district. Our economically disadvantaged populations struggle with access to literature. On average, they are exposed to 30 million fewer words than upper and middle-class peers by the time they reach kindergarten. This has far-reaching effects. A recent study by the Annie Casey Foundation found that students that didn't read proficiently by the time they reached third grade, that didn't overcome that 30 million-word barrier, were four times more likely to drop out. And that's where our library and media specialists come in. On 14 campuses, these seven ladies are the front line for literacy support. Whether it's handing out over 300 free books at Back School Bash, promoting higher checkout rates, writing BEF grants, like the one you saw, Skyping with published authors, supporting campus family literacy nights, hosting book fairs, teaching classes, updating campus collections, or working with students and teachers, literacy and the value of reading is always their goal. Parallel to that goal of literacy is a focus on information literacy. Some would say that the growth of the internet and digital media has made librarians obsolete. The truth is, our library and media specialists are more important than ever when it comes to digital information. Libraries and librarians provide, one, access to that wealth of information for our most economically disadvantaged students. Without the libraries, a lot of our students wouldn't have any access to the tools they need. Number two, they provide instruction on how to find, filter, and evaluate that information. Our library and media specialists should be applauded for their ability to adapt to this new role. They've been growing as both teachers and technologists. I could go on and on about the work that our media specialists do, but I want to take a moment to let you see some of that for yourself.
have some questions and answers.
I like decorating bookcases.
I like when we hatch chicks.
We stuff with pumpkins and characters.
It's a beautiful atmosphere. I love to laugh. I love to be quiet and say that. It's a great, great atmosphere.
I like the jumpers.
It's a nice, quiet environment, and it's a nice place to hang out and get work done.
I always enjoy getting to see the students' perspective on that. Students love the library for the opportunities it provides them to access and experience so much. I want to close with this. Many of our students and our staff, for that matter, don't see the impact that library and media specialists make. In addition to improved reading scores, which most people recognize, economically disadvantaged students and minorities are twice as likely to have advanced writing scores when a dedicated campus library and media specialist is there to support them. This district has seven dedicated media specialists. If you're a library and media specialist here tonight, would you please stand up? Even though not all of our students have a mom who's a librarian, because of the efforts of these women, our students will experience the same love and dedication. Thank you for allowing us to recognize these ladies tonight for their efforts to support reading, writing, and information literacy within our district.
Now, it's time for our students. We've had some students anxiously awaiting their time of recognition, and they're ready to come in. We have helping, helping us present Sarah Guerra and Melinda Gardner from Lost Pines Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. Murray and board. Thank you so much for giving me the honor to be a proud, proud principal of this group of kids. They are our Destination Imagination team. Come on up, guys, and they are the straight aces. And their teacher coaches are Emily Anthony and Kara Fisher. And I'm going to hand the microphone over to Kara because she is our lead coach and has been part of Destination Imagination probably since she was in school. So, 10 years, there we go.
Thank you again so much for letting us come and talk to you. I'm here to introduce a really special group of students. Earlier this year, they took on a challenge that very few people get to leave their region for. They had to create an eight-minute skit that was a fairy tale, so a fairy tale that involved a phobia. They made up their own phobia for this. They also created two works of art, one which was a functional piece, a bow and arrow. They also had to create an optical illusion using technical methods. And in addition to this, they had to go into an instant challenge room where they were given a challenge that they had no knowledge of prior to and had five minutes to solve it, and they got a perfect score on their very first instant challenge room ever. With this combined score, they were able to make it to state their first year as a team, which is very difficult to do. Texas and the Capital Region, which is a region they competed in, is known for being incredibly competitive. They compete against other fourth-grade teams that have been together since the first grade. So, this is a huge accomplishment. We're very proud of them, and we thank you so much for your support in helping us get there.
So, our group of kids would like to come up, and they each have a little present for you. And I will let them kind of explain or let Ms. Fisher explain, but if you can see, Kayden, if you'll step up a little bit, babe, and let them see your ribbon, okay? And he has a lot of pins on him, okay? And so, it is a custom to trade pins at the state event, and they designed their own little pins, and they would like to come up and honor you with one of those. So, go ahead, guys, step on up.
So, just so you know who's coming up, we have Harley Martin, Carlos Torres, Kayden Billie Del, Carter Gardner, Natalie Rebelis, and Delilah Avila.
I'm very excited.
Really?
Fernando Lopez.
And we want to thank the board for your support personally and professionally. Thank you, guys. We appreciate y'all.
Ms. Guerra, before y'all leave.
Hang on, guys.
Well, specifically, yeah. We want to thank Sarah for all her years of service to the school district. She is retiring after this year as principal of Lost Pines Elementary, so let's give Sarah a big round of applause.
It's an honor to look back.
Well, I appreciate that, Sarah. And we didn't have to go very far to find your replacement, did we?
No, we didn't.
Newly named principal for next year of Lost Pines is Melinda Gardner.
I can walk away without any worries.
Congratulations, Melinda. Congratulations.
Let's go this way, guys, because we're a little less crowded. All right, sure.
Put a picture?
It seems tighter today.
They have to move it.
He liked the medals, didn't he?
That's cool. I like to throw my spin around. Thank you. Dr. Hewitt, y'all are on.
All right. So, I am blessed to work with some fabulous directors, the Deleons. They're a married couple, and they do phenomenal work with our students. We won the district championship in one-act play this year, and it's largely due to these talented kids, but at the same time, this lady and gentlemen, these guys here just do a fantastic job. And so, they can, they're going to say a few words.
Members of the board, Mr. President and Mr. Superintendent, it is with great honor and pleasure that we are here tonight to present the district champions from Bastrop High Schools, a one-act play production of Shakespeare in Hollywood. My name is Ginny Deleon, and I'm going to hand the microphone over at this time to this year's director of the show. We're going to switch off back and forth from one year to the next, so I want to make sure I say that out loud because I want to see you next year. But I'm going to put, I'm going to hand the microphone over to my husband, Guillermo Deleon, who took the lead in direction, I took the lead in technical direction this year, for the one-act play.
Good evening, there's school board, Mr. Murray, Mr. Allen, Mr. President. I'm very excited and very happy to present to you the cast of Shakespeare, cast and crew of Shakespeare in Hollywood. This year's production is a farce or comedy. It was based on two of my great loves, Shakespeare and comedy. And so, we picked the selections because we have a strong group of kids this year, and they did a fabulous, wonderful job. This is our sixth-year advancing and the second year in a row that we've won the district championship, so we're very proud to bring that to Bastrop and represent our district and our school with pride. I want to point out really quickly a couple of the winners. We did win several acting awards during, and tech awards during the competition this year. At Zone, we were able to capture Jake Kynarth won honorable mention All-Star Cast. David and Natasha won All-Star Cast, and Robbie Carnes was the best actor at Zone of all five schools, so we were very proud of them. At District, we were able to win honorable mention All-Star Cast with Adrianne Van Clark and Natasha Cosme-Bautista. At, and David Estes again, Dylan Schmidt, and Sarah Carter were All-Star Cast at that contest. And at District, while we did not advance, we did walk away with an honorable mention All-Star Cast for Adrianne Van Clark and Natasha Cosme-Bautista, and David Estes won All-Star Cast at that competition. So, we did very well this year. We were very proud. Oh, and I have to mention Sabrina Locke, who was our stage manager, won Best Technician at Zone District and Bi-District for our group. So, she did a fabulous job all three competitions. She was recognized at all three levels. So, we were very proud of this group of kids. I just want to say on personnel, my seniors this year, they were the first group of seniors that we took as freshmen. It was an experiment four years ago. We decided to take a chance and audition some eighth graders and see what it would be like to bring in freshmen at that level. And from that year to this year, they have done nothing but work hard, work with pride, and deliver championship performances every year. So, I'm very proud of my seniors. I'm proud of all of them, but especially this group of seniors this year. They did a fabulous job, and we look forward, as my wife says, next year when she directs the one-act to coming back and presenting you hopefully with another district championship and possibly, as is our goal every year, a state championship. So, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I had the privilege of seeing the play myself, and it was outstanding. Great job, y'all.
Thank you.
Are we, oh, sorry. There we go. Lila?
No.
That's what I was told. There you go. Don't say no, I know what I'm doing.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. What a wonderful night of celebrations. This district, just so proud of all of our scholars, our student athletes, our fine arts. It's just such a great feeling. Definitely gives meaning, you know, to the work that we do. So, good evening, Mr. Allen, Mr. Murray, and members of the school board. Dr. Hewitt, who will be with us very shortly after his photo op, and I are very proud of our academic scholars. I will speak to Cedar Creek High School. We are proud, very, very proud of our UIL scholars. They, along with their sponsors and our coordinator, Ms. Beth Fox, competed in different meets throughout the UIL season, and I'm very proud of the hard work that they have put into preparing for all of these competitions, the early mornings, the Saturdays, the after-school time. This year, I'm proud to inform you that Cedar Creek High School took first place in academic district meet for UIL with 309 points, beating out our second-place school with 76 points, so kind of a really big, big lead. So, congratulations, guys, on that big lead. We have 25 students from Cedar Creek who have qualified for regionals in San Antonio this Saturday, so good luck to you all. Ms. Fox, and did you want to say a few words and recognize a few kids?
I just want to say thank you, especially to all of our parents that were there at 5:00 in the morning, to my sponsors that actually kept me calm that Saturday, to Mr. Meyer, who is our bus driver extraordinaire. We could not do without him. And most importantly, to not just my kids, but the BHS kids, they were remarkable. They represented both schools beautifully at district and throughout the season, so I'm really proud of you all. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Ms. Fox?
I'm Rebecca Bennett at Bastrop High School and the UIL academic coordinator, and I'm also very proud of our students. We have eight students advancing to regionals in several events in poetry interpretation, calculator applications, current events, number sense, spelling and vocabulary. We swept one through four, winning a team first. And literary criticism, we have two gold medal winners tonight, Chelsea Perry and Kennedy Reed. And I also want to mention our coaches, Arthur Martinez, Marina T. Martinez, Michelle Dowell, Trent Jimenez, James Bain, John McMillan, who retired from the district five years ago but can't get enough of spelling and vocabulary, and John Gosling. And I also want to thank Mrs. Fox for a wonderful district tournament. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody else, and everybody involved, and best of luck in regionals.
Thank you.
Good luck. Folks, it's one thing, we love celebrating accomplishments on the field and the court, but we really love celebrating accomplishments in academic competition. It's outstanding. Mr. Willoughby, now, Mr. Willoughby.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Trustees, thank you for having us. We'll bring the Bastrop High School District Girls Soccer Champions into the room. As I said, the BHS Girls Soccer Team are the district champions for District 265A with an overall record of 17 wins, four losses, three ties. And in the world of soccer, ties matter a lot. In district, their district record was 11 wins, one loss, and two ties. Head coach, Mrs. Coach Alexia Dyer, and she was assisted by Coach Robert Artis this year. The superlative awards were given out at the end of the season, and we had four first-team all-district selections, Alyssa Green, Sienna Rodriguez, Lacey Ellison, and Madison Gretzner. Round of applause for them. The district coaches also recognized one of our own as the district most valuable player in Lana Hastings. And the most exciting thing to announce is that we have 12 academic all-district players, Bailey Ray, Maisha Havard, Kenzie Adair, Alyssa Walker, Sienna Rodriguez, Amy Goode, Haley Muff, Mariah Ramon, Madison Gretzner, Lana Hastings, Natalie Mills, and Sterling Ellison. 12 academic all-districts. Congratulations, girls. Congratulations on a great season. Thank you very much. Now coming into the room are the Cedar Creek High School Girls Soccer Team coached by The CCHS Girls Soccer Team qualified for the bi-district competition. They had an overall record of 11 wins and 10 losses and one tie, and a district record of nine wins, four losses and, four losses and one tie. They also had two first-team all-district selections in Ms. Natalie Anderson and Christina Padron. The district coaches also recognized the goalie of the year for District 265A, Jessica Lopez. The Cedar Creek High School Girls Soccer Team has three academic all-district players, Lauren Lopez, Lorelei Mellonbrook, and Natalie Anderson. Girls are coached by head coach Nathan Anderson, assisted by Ms. Selica Casanova and Ms. Suzanne Lacy, and overcame a lot of adversity and injuries to come through this season. We're very proud of them, bi-district qualifiers for Cedar Creek High School. Coming in is Coach Chris Fisher, head coach of the Cedar Creek High School Boys Soccer Team. Come on in, guys. The Cedar Creek High School Boys Soccer Team were the District 265A Champions for the 2015 season with an overall record of 10, 3, and 6, and a district record of eight wins, zero losses, and four ties. The district coaches recognized four first-team all-district selections, newcomer of the year for District 265A, Ricardo Sesmas, Dario Becerra, Eduardo Martinez, Giovani Villalobos, and Selvin Espinoza. We also have, the district coaches recognized our own coach, Fisher, for the district coach of the year for District 265A. Qualified for the playoffs, bi-district rounds, set the stage for a lot of good things to come. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Coach Anderson. Entering the room are the BHS Bastrop High School Boys and Girls Golf Teams, so it'll take a few seconds. So, in the world of golf, the girls are the District 265A Champions, the boys are the District 265A Champions, and the boys' second team are the District 265A Runners Up. District 265A Champions, and the boys' second team are the District 265A Runners Up, and they all qualified for regionals this past week. So Ramona Watley is assisted by Coach Jim Hutchinson, and we did send three teams to regional competition in San Antonio, where the girls finished eighth in regionals and the boys finished 12th and 13th respectively in regionals. That's not mine. We had six first-team All-District selections, Adriana Coy, Ashlyn Watley, Haley Muff, Pate Hughes, Christian Harmon, and Casey Harmon. We also have several academic All-District selections, but those grade points and grades are being determined right now as we finish the fifth, sixth weeks last week, so those are yet to be announced. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations, boys and girls, on a great year. Thank you very much.
We had a couple of second-team All-Districts too. Purdy Dawson, right, is that it? Trudy Dawson?
Excellent. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Mr. Murray, it wasn't, I had a late information.
Hey, man, we're on a roll. Keep on going.
I have these two special young ladies from the Cedar Creek High School. It was late information that was brought to my attention that these two young ladies qualified for regionals also. And we have Ms. Samantha Massey, who is a junior, finished fourth place in District 265A and first place in the medalist round. And what that means, what that means is that golf competition is by team, and then whatever doesn't fill out the team, then you have individuals. And so Ms. Massey finished first in the individual competitions, and Ms. Taylor finished fifth in district and second in the medalist round.
All right.
They're coached by head coach Ben Newsom, who's in absentia. He had a...
Yeah, dental emergency.
A dental emergency last night. And these two young ladies finished 11th and 12th at regionals, and we're very proud of them for what they've accomplished. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mark. One last bit of recognition, not necessarily on our agenda, but I think it's apropos, and whether he likes this or not, I'm gonna do it, and he's outside, I'm gonna have to drag him in here. We have a gentleman who last night at another school district board meeting was approved for a new position as their director of facilities and construction. That was Mr. Henry Gideon, who served this district for over 20 years as our chief operations officer. And we want to make sure that we give him public recognition for all the years of service to our students and everybody else, and we're reluctantly gonna drag him in here. Here he comes. We want to make sure we give due recognition to Mr. Henry Gideon. Thank you, Henry. Mr. Allen, it's all yours. Again.
Okay. That was great. We're gonna move on to our, the business part of our meeting. And we're gonna ask Ms. Catherine to come up, and she's gonna give us an update on our elementary campuses.
The school board trustees, President Allen and Superintendent Murray, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on our elementary campuses. And you have a copy of this PowerPoint, but I've hidden some of the slides because it was really long. And so we're just excited to share with you today the great things that are going on at our elementary campuses. At the beginning of the year, we presented the targeted improvement plans, and so we want to revisit those targeted improvement plans. The first goal was basically making sure that our classroom observation data revealed that instruction was aligned to the state standards. We will have PLC meetings following that data-informed lesson development and planning, students monitoring their progress with data folders, and charting their progress and growth. And then bilingual teachers would make informed decisions about language of instruction. We did that early on in the year so that we could really establish that before we got to the testing phase and so... And then finally, the teachers would have an intervention lesson based on data, and we added an intervention period this year. So the first goal is regarding the instruction aligned to the state standards. We've had learning walks with teachers, we've had administrator affirmation and coaching walkthroughs, so that's not evaluative, it's coaching, using cognitive coaching skills that principals and specialists and coaches have been trained in, instructional support from the specialists and coaches. We've had CRAM sessions, that's curriculum refinement and mastery sessions, I'll explain more later, math make and takes, and a bilingual cohort this year. The teacher learning walks, some of the campuses have incorporated learning walks. They have taken groups of teachers on walks to go to other classrooms and see what they can find. This quote right here is from a third-grade teacher. "Teachers on the same team are planning together, yet the implementation of each lesson looks completely different from one class to the next. Not that every teacher should be teaching the exact same thing at the exact same time, the exact same way, however, teachers should be focused on the same main ideas and should all be asking rigorous questions." And so that was a concern, and so what they did is they went back and, as lead PLC teachers, they would go in and make sure that they were talking about the resources they were using, they were talking about the questions they were asking, and being more intentional about that in their PLCs, so that would transfer to the classrooms. Instructional support and improvement, we've had literacy coaches on each campus. We also have math specialists that travel from several campuses. These are just some quotes about literacy coaches, how they model, how they're a great resource, raising the level of rigor for students, and providing feedback and direction for teachers. The CRAM sessions came out of our TLI grant, and they started in January. We're really excited about these. Master teachers were paid with TLI funds to present exemplary lessons for upcoming units of instruction, and it's been, it's been a great opportunity for the teachers as well as attending, as well as the teachers presenting. And so we're excited to grow those teacher leaders. We also have math specialists who have conducted make and take sessions for teachers periodically, so teachers can walk away with math station activities that are connected to their upcoming units of instruction. And then our bilingual cohort that Patricia referenced last school board meeting, last spring, we began planning our bilingual cohort, and Patricia has guided this cohort to also develop some lead teachers. They, we're very blessed to have Patricia leading this group, and her specialist help with that cohort as well. They've even been some of our CRAM presenters. PLC meetings was one of our next goals. We had some challenges with our PLC meetings at the elementary intermediate level, some, even some pushback last year when they began, but this year they've attended the PLC Collaborative at Region 13 and gotten support through that PLC Collaborative, and that's really helped and developed those teacher leaders in the PLCs.
And the pushback, Kathy, was?
From some teachers and maybe all of us trying to do those PLCs and not, not developing those teacher leaders. So this year, we've really developed those teacher leaders in the PLC, so it's not a specialist leading it, it's the actual teachers that are leading it. So that's been good. Understanding why they need to have those PLCs. So one of the quotes really speaks, speaks to that, let's see, one of the ones, "To break down the teaks and have a better focus has helped me become a better teacher." And you have some other quotes as well. One of the, one of the quotes from one of the teachers that's not in one of the slides said that she's learned more about specificity of teaks than in 12 years of teaching combined. So, and then a quote from one of our instructional leaders as well, talking about how she's grown and how it's refined the practices and collaboration at the campus level, so. And we also have been using data to drive instruction. This has been really, really great on the campuses. The student data folders grew out of the longitudinal data that we did at the beginning of the school year, and the teachers have really taken, taken those and made them their own. And so the data walls that we've got to monitor student progress, incentives for student progress, data-driven instruction, and then we've continued our bug awards, our bringing-up-grades awards that we've had for the past several years that really focus on student progress. This is an example of a student data folder. Students set goals and make their, they chart their progress. This is a quote from a teacher, Sunday Thompson, I know you may remember her from Teacher of the Year, I believe, last year, was it last year? She really has, feels like it's the relationship that it's built between she and the students, holding students accountable for their learning and building that bond, and students are leading the discussion. It's exciting to see the students charting their progress, so. These are some examples of the data walls where students are monitoring their progress. It's not just the tested grade levels, it's even kindergarten letter recognition or Lexia Data, which is a computer program. This is a, this is from a, oops, go back. This is from a data PLC, using the data by student standard, and they can, they group their students, whether they need intervention, if they need enrichment. So we're really hitting each child where they need, where they need, where they needed, not just giving everyone the same thing. We're differentiating. And so that data has been really important, so. And we've also had a lot of, a lot of extracurricular things that have gone on, and you've got lots of slides with great pictures from different events. You saw the Destination Imagination Team here tonight, and lots of other, other great extracurricular things that our students get to participate in. So with all that being said, all the great things that are going on at campus, and things that have been intentionally put in place at the campuses that are good for kids, we also know that we're measured by the state, and so I can't complete this presentation without sharing you some evidence of the data and how this implementation of all of these different great things has made a difference in our data for students. This first slide that you'll see is the third-grade reading star. It's in English from last April, and then looking at the mock star we took in February, which is the exact same test, so we use the release test, the state releases those tests. Level 2 means passing, level 3 is advanced, which is about 89% or more. And so just from, just from that point in April till February, with two more months basically of intervention, of intense intervention, you'll see that with current strategies in place, we've had some growth, and more time for intentional intervention before the actual star, which was, which is tomorrow. The third-grade reading is tomorrow. So this is a Spanish, the same test, from the actual star to the mock this year, and we've had some growth as well, and you see in some places, some great growth. So our gains that we've seen just from the actual star to the mock star in third grade this year, looking at the same test but different kiddos, up to an 18% increase for level 2 passing, and then up to a 10% increase for level 3 advanced performance. There's some additional data that you have copies of at your tables, and this is what the next, the next piece of data is. It's from the mock that we took last February to the mock that we took this February for third-grade reading. And so what you see is basically the same time of year. And so what this shows us is that we are, in many cases, ahead of where we were last February, February 2014 to February 2015. Even with our level 3 advanced, it's exciting to see. This is the Spanish results, and we're seeing again where we're ahead in many cases. So that's very exciting for us, with still, like I said, about two months to intervene. And when we're intervening, we're really looking at the data by student standard and by student, so we can get, get where they, get them to where they need to be specifically. This is the fourth-grade reading, actual star, from last April to the mock star. So we saw that for third grade a while ago, this is for fourth grade. So it's the same test, different students, and we're seeing some gains as well with several months left for that intervention. And I love how we're seeing all these gains in the level 3 performance because that tells us we're getting kids to pass at even a higher rate. And here's for Spanish, fourth-grade reading from the actual star to the mock this year. So we're seeing gains of up to 8% for level 2 passing and 8% for level 3 advanced performance. More data you have in front of you, comparison of the mock to the, to the mock, so same time, same time of the year. This was really exciting. Look at this. We've got plus 18, plus 10, plus 4, plus 3, so we're really looking at some gains, mock to mock. So we're better prepared this year in February than we were last year in February in many cases. And where we, where we needed some extra help, we've got that two months of time to prepare and, and get those students up where they need to be. This is, next slide is a comparison of the Spanish, mock to mock. We're seeing some gains, sometimes up to 18 points, which is fabulous. The writing star that was taken back in April, beginning of April, so this is the April star 2014 to the mock star at the beginning of February, so again, with two months to We did have some gains, mostly in level 3, which is telling us we're getting kids to pass at a higher level, and the data, we look at the data by standard so we can target those areas we need for growth. And here's the Spanish, and we're seeing our gains in level 2 and our passing rates. We do take a fall benchmark, oh, that's up to 30% for level 2 and 5% for level 3. So we do take a fall benchmark, and so this is the same students, where they were in November to where they were at the beginning of February. So this is just showing you that student progress and how the students are doing. So we've got some pluses there as well. Up to plus 23, which is really great. Some pluses as well in our, in our level 3. Then we move on to our Spanish, and we're seeing some, some big gains there from benchmark to benchmark. Like I said earlier, we're so blessed that we have our leadership of Patricia in our bilingual and ELL, and I really feel like that a lot of this progress in bilingual is due to setting that language of instruction and sticking with it and really focusing on that language of instruction for our bilingual students. And then I went back and looked at, what if we compared last year's mock to this year's mock? The way that we had it divided, I couldn't look at the composition piece altogether, but the revising and editing section makes up the majority of the test, it's 63% of the test. And when I looked at last year's, last, last end of January till the beginning of February this year, I'm seeing lots of great growth, plus 26, plus 25, plus 2, 19, and 15, and then staying about the same. So we're, we're moving in the right direction. And then finally, we have math. We have new teaks in math, and so with math, we couldn't compare to last year's star because it's a different, a totally different test. Some of the grade levels have up to 50% new teaks and sometimes even a little bit more. So what we're looking at is progress from the fall benchmark to the spring benchmark, and we're really seeing lots of gains there. It's not counted on accountability, but we know it counts for these kiddos, and so we are really still focusing on math because they need to, they deserve that, and they have so many new teaks, the teachers are learning. But look at all those gains that we've made, that progress we've made since the fall. That's very exciting. On Spanish, from fall benchmark to spring benchmark as well, we've got some great gains. So, and this is third grade, so we've got up to a 35% increase for level 2 passing and up to a 12% increase in level 3 advanced performance. So it's just great progress. We're disappointed that it's not gonna be counted in accountability because we were ready for that challenge. So with fourth-grade math, this again compares the fall benchmark to the spring benchmark. Got gains all over the place. Our kids are growing and moving, and we know that that's what we want. We want our kids to grow, even in the level 3, the advanced, so. And here is our Spanish. And so we're about the same, about the same in Spanish, but still, that's good, we're still doing well. Up to a 17% increase in level 2 passing, and then up to an 8% increase for level 3. One of the things we don't want to leave out, because these students have been working so very, very hard, is rewarding student progress. One of the campuses did a jump party for jumping thresholds, and that was for jumping 10 points from test to test, and so they, they had a jump party, they worked out a very intricate formula to figure out how long they got to jump.
Who's that screaming on there? Oh, that's Bridget, I'm sorry.
I'm telling you. They made her have fun. And if you want to see some fun, Minute to Win It at Lost Pines, look at Miss Guerra right there. So, yeah. So they had Minute to Win It games, and, and all the campuses did different things. They were very creative. Our principals have been so, have been so excited, and, but they haven't forgotten that piece, and that's rewarding the kids for their progress and how well they're doing. So it's not just the kids that are getting those upper levels that are getting rewarded, it's kids all across the board that are, that are getting rewarded. The, the quote, this quote here at the end really sums it up, and I, I had asked the principals for quotes and pictures and things like that. They sent all this to me, and I just put it all together, but the principals did all the work collecting these things. But, but, um, the Swedish proverb, rough waters are true to tests of leadership, in calm water every ship has a good captain. And I see, I see some great leaders sitting right over here, and I've been so privileged to work with them the past, this past year and years before too, but this quote by Bridget is, sums it up, I think, for all of our, our principals. With the IR label this year, I've had a laser-like focus on monitoring instruction and on ensuring that my teachers are monitoring the growth of every student. We've had more frequent data meetings where we discuss and we measure student learning and growth and make necessary instructional adjustments. This frequent monitoring and reflection have made my teachers and me much stronger and much more focused on student progress. I've grown tremendously as an instructional leader, and I would say that's the case for each one of these, these ladies sitting back here, so. And then finally, if you have questions or comments about any of the data or any of the things we're doing, the principals are here to answer, or I can answer as well. Patricia's right over there.
Kathy, I'd like to, to applaud you all for taking that road of, which is a very more rigorous road, of focusing on instructional practices, providing the teachers the time, the support, the, from your, your coaches, and the expertise to be able to go back in their classrooms and, and be excited as learners as well. It's almost that you can see the, you can almost see the energy in, in what you're doing, and it's more, I think it's a more sustainable way to improve our success rate for our kids, not just on tests but in their learning. And, and it's really exciting. Having been an educator, I can't tell you how exciting it is to sit here and listen to a presentation like this, that this is the road that we're taking in our, in our pursuit of student success. So I want to thank you and applaud all the principals and teachers and coaches and administrators for doing, doing this for our district, so.
Kathy, I don't want to put any negative twists on this, but on the minuses, does
this, does this give the, the principals the opportunity to take a look at that, and is there time to take those minuses and turn them into pluses?
I'm glad you asked that. So immediately following any, any kind of assessment that we take like this, the major assessments, we, we break it down by, by standard and, you know, by the learning objective, and, and then they are able to divide their students up, and you saw the, the triangle that was kind of upside down, so that's where we, we had, it had an objective listed or a, a standard listed on there, and they had the kids grouped by that objective. Okay, well, who needs intervention on this? You know, who didn't get it? Or who needs enrichment? Because they got it, but we're just going to keep on pumping them up so they can get what, exactly what they need, and who was right in the middle and, you know, might need, might need a little bit of, a little bit of intervention as well. So they can really target and group the kids where they need that specific intervention. So yes, it gives them about two months between the test and the next assessment, basically.
No one likes the label, no one likes the IR, right?
No.
So we want to get rid of those.
Yes.
And that, from a higher view, I mean, this, this is a great slide, maybe Molly understands it a little better than I do, because there, there's a lot of things on here, but we just, we do appreciate everything that you guys are doing moving forward, and it's good to take a check to see where we're headed, if, you know, minus five, we are, uh, plus, we obviously want the plus 15 and 20s, right?
Right.
But I applaud everything that you guys are doing, and we are here to support you in any way we can to, to get the campuses successful.
Absolutely, thank you.
And Mr. President, I'd like to note, I want to thank the two new principals on the elementary campuses here for taking the challenge. I know you inherited some things here, and thank you, and you have our support in whatever you need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, Sandra, you want to bring Noe up?
Yes. Noe Reyes is here to give us our annual delinquent tax update.
Good evening to you all. Good to see you all again.
Good to see you also. How are you doing?
Ellen Owens, who's our area manager, is passing out a detailed report on our delinquent tax collection activities for the last year, which I think you'll find very helpful. On behalf of MVBA, McCurry, Vesselka, Bragan Allen, it's a pleasure to once again present to the Bastrop Independent School District our annual report on, on delinquent taxes. Very happy to say we've had another excellent, excellent year in, in our collections, so that the, the students, of course, can have buses and teachers and, and do all the great programs that we've heard about today, and we are most happy to be a, a, a part of that. As I mentioned, this report is pretty detailed. I'd like to talk about two categories of collections that I consider to be the most important. There's also a number of other charts and pies and, uh, information that you'll find helpful. I'll touch, I'll touch up on that just a little bit, but I'd like to focus on, on two different categories, as I mentioned. First, I want to, I want to focus on the total revenue from tax collections. In the last four years, the district's total revenue from tax collections actually exceeded the amount of current taxes that were assessed in each fiscal year. The district has collected anywhere from 100.6% to 102.58% of the amount of current taxes levied during each of the last four fiscal years. That basically means that each year, the amount you levy with current collections, delinquent collections, and penalties and interest, you collect over 100% during the delinquent tax year, so that means your cash flow is very, very good. I've broken that into, into numbers. If you look with me on page three of the report we've provided you, it's chart one and the accompanying, or it's, you see the bar graph, and you also see a chart. In 2013, the Bastrop Independent School District had an adjusted tax levy of $41,786,427. Your total current and delinquent tax collections were $42,444,900. Your penalties and interest collected on delinquent taxes were $819,927. Your total revenue then was $42,864,417. That is a percentage of 102.58. I've not seen that any higher. I'm sure they're out there somewhere, but that's very, very high. So congratulations to Bastrop Independent School District. If you look down the chart, 2012, 2011, 2010, you've collected 101.99%, 102.45%, and in 2010, 100.60. So every year you collect well above your levy, and that's total and delinquent collections. If you look with me on the next page, the amount that goes delinquent on July 1st each year for the past four years has been decreasing. That means that more people in Bastrop Independent School District are, have been able to pay their taxes on time. In 2010, about 95% of the people paid their taxes on time. Fast forward that to 2013, about three point, uh, excuse me, about 95% in 2010 paid on time, and in 2013, which is the year we're currently collecting on, about 90, 90, is it 95 and a, 96 and a half percent paid on time. So of your annual tax levy, right now, only about 3.5% goes delinquent, and that's the amount that we receive on July 1st and begin to work it immediately. So that, that's a very small number. It's a very good number also. Chart, chart three, which is on page five, it details our delinquent tax collections. Once again, if you read the chart with me at the bottom of the page, for tax year 2013, $1,515,669 went delinquent. As of March 31st of this year, only $781,780 are, are left to be collected. We've, in nine months, collected almost 50% of the, of the delinquent tax balance that was handed to us on July 1st of 14 for 2013. That 48%, 48.42 is also very, very healthy. I anticipate that, that when the year's out, we'll be closer to 60%. So only about 40% will be left to collect over the next, over the next couple of years. It usually takes about three to four years to collect, to, to max out one particular delinquent tax year's collections because of payment agreements, because of litigation, because of bankruptcies, because of senior citizen deferrals. But we typically collect up to 90 to 95% of the delinquent tax roll, it, within, within about three or four years. You can see the progressive, the progressive, the increasingly, the increasing percentages of, of delinquent taxes collected. The 2012 tax year, which we received less than two years ago, in 21 months, we've collected 68% of that, and each year, of course, we, we collect more. So as you can see, both your total collections and your delinquent tax collections are in, in a very, very healthy state. Now, how do we do it? We have four and a half employees, full, four and a half, four full-time employees and one half, a part-time employee here in Bastrop County that are able to set up payment agreements with taxpayers, that are able to make phone calls, that are able to speak personally with individuals that need to, need to make certain arrangements, and we have a, a very strong local presence, which allows us to do it. There's, there's a number of other charts there that, that show you a, a number of other things, collections categories. All of those are, are very good, and I won't, I won't take too much of your time by going into detail with each of those. Page 11 and forward shows you all of the, all of the things that we do to collect these taxes, the number of lawsuits that we file, the number of tax sales that we do, the number of payment arrangements, the number of notices we send, and of course, the idea is to collect as, as, as much as possible in, in as little time. Overall, as I mentioned, your delinquent tax collection program is very, very good, and of course, our services come at no cost to the district. Our, our services are a contingent fee of what's collected. None of your tax levy goes, goes to pay us, so we, we, we're able to work based on the statutes in place at, at no charge to the district. Are there any questions?
Great job. Shout you guys.
Noe, and Ellen, thank y'all for what you do, and principals, not, not only do they show us the money and, and bring the money in, but they also are very, very, very good supporters of our grant process, and so thank y'all very much. We appreciate it.
Noe, also want to publicly recognize Shelley Vesselka, recently passed away, partner in a company, a great supporter of Bastrop ISD.
Yes.
I think it was a private ceremony, it was hell, we kind of find out after the fact, but we love Shelley, I know he loved Bastrop ISD and
Absolutely.
cared about our kids, so just wanted to publicly recognize and, and say prayer and thoughts to his wife and his child.
Thank you, thank you. Bastrop ISD was his favorite client, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I don't have a lot more information than last month, but we're used to that in a legislative session. What, what I do have is I did attend a Moak Casey Legislative Update yesterday, so I did get some information, as much as you can get, about the legislative process and where it concerns school finance. One thing they did say is if you're a July fiscal year, good luck, because it's going to be hard to pass a budget when they don't have any answers yet. They also said it's possible you might, would want to pass your budget based on current year law. I'm not sure that's what we want to do, because I think based on what the legislature has been speaking of, there is money for school districts. We don't know exactly how much. I'll show you some scenarios that they went over with us, but again, we've met with principals, we've talked about that to you in previous months. We've been in contact with them, again, as late as last week or early last week, to just go over with them again on their budget requests. I don't have those budget requests in, in the presentation tonight, because honestly, until we know some idea of how much money we're going to get, those will be prioritized. I would hope by the May board meeting and hopefully by the agenda review meeting, I know last year we had a budget workshop, so as to not have to have the board come for another workshop, we can have our workshop at, at the agenda review meeting and have some information and bring our priorities and our process and, and the processes and, and give some, at least some scenarios that the board can see, and then see the proposed budget at the May board meeting, and then, of course, we have to adopt the May, adopt the budget in June, since we are a July fiscal year. Again, as you know, and you do it all the time, we amend budgets, and that's what, the reason the board has that authority for this purpose. We will receive our preliminary certified tax rolls next week, so those are, those are put into place for districts that do have a July budget, so they, we get those certified preliminary values. Of course, we get our certified values in July. Couple of legislative slides, just wanted to share with you. There are a total of 6,442 bills filed this year. That's over 300 more than in the last biennium. There's about 1,037 bills of interest. They, I don't know why this is doing this, I hate when it slides in like that, but the priority bills that have been heard in committee. We've heard a lot about pre-K, high-quality pre-K. These are priority bills that I think are moving. The A through F rating systems, you know that schools and campuses, districts and campuses, they're looking to be rated on a grade system, that, that's what they say parents, that's what students are used to, to knowing. That doesn't apply till 17, 18 school year. Tax saving grant, grants, these have to do with the school choice or vouchers. Opportunity districts, this is, involves state intervention for schools that are in year two and three of IR state. That's just different, there's a, an opportunity, basically they're setting up where districts would be under some sort of other rule besides the district you're in. I'm not sure how far that'll go, it's, it's out there. Math and literacy academies, this is basically for teachers for extra training for, in math, K through three, and for reading, grades four through five. This is for teacher training, additional teacher training. Tax relief, what they talk mostly about, this has to do with decreasing the franchise tax, and then budget limitations, this al-, this also has to do with franchise tax and the reduction based on that. There's 41 days remaining in the session, the session does end June 1st, but hopefully by next month, we'll know a little more. There's three main budget scenario plans. We talked a little bit about these last month. There's House Bill One, and I would hi-, highlight the area I have in bold. Most, these two plans have, the basic change is the increase of the basic allotment, and you can see what those are for the 15, 16, and 16, 17 year. House Bill One would give Bastrop ISD approximately $2.7 million more than current law. Right now, our current law, based on current law, we would have about $1 million more from last year revenue, just based on our ADA. just based on our ADA and property tax value growth. And so, any of these House bills, Senate bills that pass will give us additional money. The Senate plan is very similar, just a, a lower actually, uh, increase in the basic allotment. Um, it's one point seven million dollars to Bastrop ISD. When you see the two point two billion and the one point eight billion, that's the, what it's going to add to the school, school districts, district, or statewide.
What do the folks at Moak and Casey say about the Senate's plan for tax relief, which is based on property tax relief?
Property, yeah. They talked, well, basically about the, uh, the ta, the, uh, homestead exemption and that, the, uh, property tax owners would have a property tax exemption. But the, the funding mechanisms would give that, uh, in their funding mechanism, give that, this districts wouldn't lose money because they'll give us the property value. They'll adjust the formulas, so that even though the taxpayers get a break on their property taxes, the districts will not be hurt.
So on both of these plans, two point seven million and the one point, uh, seven million, are monies allocated in those bills? Or is that just additional revenue that we use to our?
On these, it's just, it's additional revenue. This, uh, House Bill seventeen fifty-nine, which is the ACOG plan, which, uh, it, it has a larger increase to the basic allotment. However, this plan completely, basically redoes the school finance. It gets rid of the cost of education index. It gets rid of the transportation, transportation formula, which, uh, under, it's, the transfer, transportation formula that's in effect now has been the same for thirty-two years. So basically, what they're saying is they added money on the basic allotment for transportation, but they're now designating it for transportation. They get rid of the high school allotment, the staff allotment, which had to do with, um, um, insurance, um, payments, uh, the, the, for, chapter forty-one revenue hold harmless, and it reduces a mid-size adjustment. This gives us, uh, two point eight million. This one actually gives our district the most money. I don't see that this one will go, I don't know that they'll re, revamp the whole school system because of the, the lawsuit that's still in effect. There's still, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, ACOG's, uh, purpose here is, is he's trying to push the conversation before that they'd have to go to a court decision.
Right.
And I think he's just trying to get the conversation started. He is a big supporter of public education. And a lot of people look at this and say, well, why would he take all these things away? And it's really, uh, an effort to try to get
Right.
the discussion, uh, going with the Senate and the House prior to going to that court decision.
Right. Yeah. Uh, it'd be great for us if this would pass. But, but again, we'll, I, I, I know this, I, the state will give the district something, I know. Uh, so in looking at our priority goals, we've talked about a few of these last, um, month. Just wanted to go again over some of our priorities. Um, safety and security, of course, are always a, a priority in the district and restructuring our current safety and security program. Uh, some of our, in instructional academic improvement areas, of course, will be in year two of our early college high school. Um, the House Bill Five, uh, it's not going to be, uh, required, but the eight-period day that we're going to, um, at, uh, propose at the high schools will help with the House Bill Five, um, getting those students able to be able to take their pathways and also be able to get all of their electives and get everything they need. Of course, bilingual ESL support is always important. And as you know, and I have another slide that shows how those populations are increasing. Uh, we always look to give salary increases, especially with cost of, um, healthcare rising. Uh, additional mass support, uh, through instructional specialists at the elementary level. Uh, a freshman academy initiative at the high schools. Um, we are looking at growth positions, as you know, we do. We had a, about a three percent increase in enrollment this year. We typically have about seven to ten positions that we ask for growth each year. Um, we will hopefully in May bring, bring those positions to the board, actually for a vote even before the budget's adopted, so that the campuses can start hiring those positions. If we wait until June, it makes it hard for recruiting as far as getting qualified teachers and the best teachers available. Uh, so we're going, that will possibly be asked for at the May meeting. And, uh, some secondary sciences, science equipment, this is by no means an entire list, because we've had lots of discussions, uh, with all of the campuses. Um, you know, as you know, in the last, this will be our fourth year of our instructional and specialist initiative. Each year, we've had high school. We've added through the years. This fourth year, we're going to focus on the elementary math. We talked a little bit about that at the agenda review meeting last week. Uh, again, our early college high school year two, we'll have to add a, some staff, uh, four additional teachers for the next class coming in and a full-time counselor. Uh, and then, of course, the eight-period, the eight-period day will require some additional staff at our high schools. Uh, the bilingual education program, looking for a program manager possibly. As you know, we, uh, had the, uh, added the program director, the ESL bilingual program director this year. And so, again, just to help with this population, as you see those fast note, uh, growth numbers. Um, non-instructional, it's on the agenda tonight, is our transportation contract. We are going to have an additional cost for that. We're looking at change, uh, adding, making some additions to Gateway for their growth. Again, lots of, lots of stuff. Uh, estimated enrollment for next year, we're saying is ten thousand, three fifty-seven. That's about a two and a half percent enrollment, um, growth from this year. ADA, nine thousand, four twenty-one, again, about a two and a half percent. Uh, of course, we'll keep our same M and O tax rate. Our CPTD values are at three billion. Our preliminary property values for tax purposes collection, two point nine billion. And of course, right now, we have a debt service tax rate of forty cents. We'll know more once we get our certified values and see where that will be. Again, as you would recall, we did the big, big bond refunding. We actually would close on those bonds this week, so that should reduce our bond payments for next year as well. So, once all of that plays out, we'll hopefully, if possible, reduce the tax rate again. Uh, property values, we're still looking about a six to seven percent property value growth. We'll know more next week when we get those certified values. Again, just with a legislative year, we're going to continue to monitor the legislative action, look at the property values, prioritize the needs of the district, and hopefully, again, or we will bring those to you at our, uh, May agenda review meeting for the first, for the first few. Uh, that's all I have tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I need Janie's help here.
Okay, all right.
On Thursday night, when you were going through your, um, Kathy was going through the, um, campus improvement plan updates. We, we talked about, was it, I may not have the verbiage right here, specialist or, uh, for the, in the elementary campuses not, possibly not sharing them. Was it math, English, or math writing, or something like, are those, is that wish list in this budget now for those positions?
The math instructional coaches, um, as far as increasing them at, in some capacity. And yes, that was in tonight.
That is that, yeah.
We talked about one per campus, or we talked at least about one, so that, um, the elementary could just share two campuses instead of three.
And is math the only area where we needed those?
At, at this time. We think that's a great next step.
Because they have reading instructional specialists right now.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra.
Thanks, Sandra. We're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Okay.
If nobody wants to pull anything off the consent agenda, we will, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
The movement seconded to approve the consent agenda, uh, three, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, our only action item of the night will be presented by Henry Gideon.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Richard Templeton is with us this evening. I'd invite him up, uh, in case we have some questions regarding this action item. I'd also like to recognize that we have several of our veteran drivers in the House this evening. Thank you guys for coming this evening. Uh, earlier in the year, uh, under Mr. Murray's leadership, uh, we met, uh, with our vendor provider, Gold Star, uh, on a proposal to move forward with a new five-year partnership. Uh, in summary, we had a discussion on Thursday night, um, in which we talked about some of the elements. Uh, the biggest challenge, uh, facing us currently with an economy in Texas that's doing really well is being market competitive for our salaries. So the proposal is a very good proposal. Uh, Mr. Murray and, and Barry and Sandra and I met with, uh, Richard and his team. Uh, we had an opportunity to, uh, take a look at and evaluate potential cost savings that may result as, uh, as, as this proposal goes forward. Um, but it does represent a nine percent one-time increase, uh, as we go into this fiscal year. And then, of course, we're subsequent to, uh, CPI increases, which would be cost of living. The biggest, uh, increase, of course, is, is labor. And, uh, we have, um, done some research, done some market comparisons. I'll let Mr. uh, Templeton, uh, express those, that information to you, uh, as he sees fit. The other thing is, we're also looking to capitalize and replace some equipment, about sixteen new buses?
Correct.
And, uh, five or six, uh, buses that are fairly new. Uh, bringing in new equipment reduces our cost per mile. And we're hoping to replace a, a pretty good s, handful of buses that are well past their extended durability. They can be maintained, they can stay on the road. Um, but once you get two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand miles on some of these big cat six diesels, and what are we using nowadays? Are, they've gone to seven diesels? What, what size engines are there now? Sixty, yeah. Um, anyway, by bringing in some capital, spreading out that cost over the five years of our annual budget uh, allows us to reduce costs in terms of operations and, and maintenance. But I'm going to step out of the way and let, uh, Richard have a moment and then answer any questions that you may have.
Absolutely. Mr. Allen, members of the board, Mr. Murray, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for giving Gold Star, for giving us the opportunity to be a part of this school district and this community over this, uh, last five years. And I want to tell you that it's been a real honor and privilege to be able to transport the students of this school district. Uh, also, would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge our employees that are here today. Would you guys stand, please? They do an outstanding job, not only for our company, but for the school district. And I'll tell you, they have a difficult job. I, I was talking to John back there. We have some employees that leave transportation at four forty-five in the morning, and some of them that do not get back until around seven thirty or eight at night. You know, that's a long day, guys. And, and I tell you, it's a difficult job, but they do it very, very well. They understand that what they do is important, that they make a difference in the students that they transport. They know if, if, if they get those kids to school on time every single morning, if they get them there with a positive attitude, then those students are ready to learn. So they do play an important role. And like I say, they do an excellent job. And I thank you for what you do every single day. I know that, uh, that, uh, Henry has gone through our proposal. And main thing I'd like to do, uh, tonight is answer any questions that you might have, uh, about our proposal.
We looked over it, um, Thursday, and it looked real good. I'm, I'm glad to see that we're, we're trying to, uh, look at the other districts and see what they're paying, so that we can take care of our own too, is, is one of the main things. And I know a lot of this increased cost, you said, is labor. And, uh, that dearly doesn't bother me when we, when we take and we look at what the other districts are paying and they can drive a district over and make a little bit more money. Um, I'm glad that we're putting it back into our, our employees.
Absolutely. And that's what we're going to do. I, over the last year and a half, the market has, has changed considerably as far as the wages. And it's not just in this area, it's everywhere in Texas. So we're running into this. So we thank you for that.
The only other thing I'll say, I'm, I'm glad that a, a lot of them showed up, because the, these are a lot of, um, people that, that worked for BISD for a long time. And then, and then when, when, when you guys came in, they obviously went to our view. And, and a lot of times, you drivers are the first contact for that student in the morning, the very first contact. Uh, so, so you may have a, uh, you, you may have a, um, lost my train of thought here, but you, you, you may make a difference in his day, uh, whether good or bad. And also, you're the last representative that he may see from Gold Star slash BISD
Right.
for the day. So it's, so I want to thank you for everything you do, because I, I know it's not an easy job. It, it doesn't hurt that we're four hundred square miles.
Four fifty.
Four hundred and fifty square miles. We're, we're one of the largest districts, uh, as far as geography goes in, in, uh, in the state. So, I see some familiar faces back there, and, and I'm glad you hung in there. And, and it looks like Gold Star's doing a great job. Uh, I, I think we should thank you guys one more time.
I'll tell you one other thing about the four hundred and fifty square miles. There's some county roads out there that really do not like our buses. Or maybe our buses don't like the county roads.
There's some county roads that shouldn't be roads.
There you go. So I, as, as, Henry said, there's a number of vehicles that it's time for replacing. So, and that, that's what we intend to do.
Yeah, I want to say this also, Richard, uh, and thanks, James, for those words. But just recently, it was an example that we deal with all the time out here, not only the, the size of our district, but when we get a certain amount of rain, some of those so-called county roads go away.
Yes, they do.
But our, our folks, you and, and Derek and the folks and all our drivers, uh, find a way very quickly to reroute and get our kids safely to school. And so for that, we say thank you to you as well.
There's one other individual I'd like to introduce, because he's going to be happening, uh, Kirby Campbell. He's going to be our Director of Operations. So you may see his face around here from time to time. So just wanted to let you know he's out here with us.
Welcome.
Fantastic.
You bet.
Well, thanks for that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Henry. For our only action out of the night, we will e, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
The movement seconded to approve the transportation proposal, authorize the superintendent and negotiate and finalize the terms of the contract. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Again, we thank you, Gold Star.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Henry.
The other thing, we will, uh, we, we won't be going into closed session tonight. Um, there's no need. And I think Nancy will send us a small, uh, blurb, um, to the board on just an update. With that subject there, Pine Forest Unit Six. The other thing is, is, is we have a, we have a busy month in our district, April and May, going into June. And we, Dr. Mix brought this up this week, and we've talked about it in the past. Um, a lot of, a lot of times, we'll go to these events, we'll see four board members at one event, and then we get, there's another event where there's no board member. So what we're trying to do, we're trying to spread this out a little bit and, and try to have representation of the board to the majority of these events. So what, uh, Nancy's done is she's put together a, a really nice spreadsheet that she's going to email to us. And we'll be able to check the box that, that you want to attend. And Nancy can kind of resend that out every few days, so we'll know what rep, representation's going to be there. Obviously, graduations are very important. Um, and a lot of people forget, we have three very important graduations. Um, one being Genesis, um, the other being Cedar Creek High School, and the other being Bastrop High School. So those are three very important, um, graduations. If, if we have a hundred percent participation, I'd appreciate that. If you can't, you're, make plans, perfectly understand. But, um, those, those, that's a very special night for a lot of people. Um, on, on the other stuff, we just, uh, need to go through that and see what we can do to, to get some good, uh, board attendance there. Does anybody have any questions or any issues with that? She'll send it out, and we can just check where we need to go, and she can keep us updated.
So I take it that that recommendation I had of Dr. Mix going to all those things was not acceptable?
I don't know if that's going to work.
Uh, Mr. Allen, I, I'd ask our students, you know, I, I know this, because I've talked to them. I talked to them in student advisory council. I talked to other students off the council. It does make a difference to our students when, uh, the superintendent shows up, when our board members, uh, Destiny, I know you've been in the district for a long time, and now you're in your fourth year of high school. I mean, is that something that really makes a difference to you, when we show interest and show up those?
It does. It, um, it makes you appreciated more and it makes you, um, feel proud of yourself for accomplishing things and feel proud that people are here to support you. And so, it does make a difference.
Right, yeah.
Mr. President, I have a question for each one of the student advisor here. First, I'm going to start with you, Benjamin. I like the hair.
Thank you.
So I got two questions for you. What, what, what product are we running with? It's a fair question. We've got to have fun in here.
I don't even know.
You don't even know?
Cheap stuff.
Cheap stuff.
He likes cheap stuff.
Long you using the same thing, don't we?
I need some, I need some more expensive stuff, as you can see.
So, Benjamin, what is, uh, and I'm going to ask this to all three of you. What is one thing that this district can, can do to, to improve your educational experience here?
Um, that's a good question. Um, what you're doing so far is really great. It's cool to see the, uh, all the effort that y'all put into it. And so, um, I don't know if I have any recommendation, but to keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Destiny?
Um, I would just say consistency. Um, you know, it's great to go to one class and be able to learn so much. You know, it's great to go to one class and be able to learn so much and be able to have everything that you need, and then to go to another class and it not be the same, but to find out that it's supposed to be the same and it's not, that's where I would want to do the most improvements in consistency, because it does make a big difference.
Awesome answer. Cory?
The teachers, they help us pretty well. They let us know that they have before and after-school tutorials, so they're really trying their best, too. So, I mean, everything is going good.
I think that the mandatory tutorials also help the students a lot. I know that it's like, you know, you have to go, and it gives them like a push to be able to go. I think they give them snacks there, and so I think that's a really good program to have.
Fantastic, thank you.
You know, one of the things that Destiny brought up, we talked about quite a bit in student advisory council, and she's going to know what I talk about, because we do talk about those things you think we talk about. We talk about food, and we talk about dress code, and all those things you think we talk about, but more so than not, they talk about things that are important in the classroom, about instructional practices, about teachers that build relationships are the ones, the teachers, the classrooms they want to go back into. And certainly even for our students, and they talk about these students, and some of those students are on our council, students are at risk. They need those relationships probably more than anybody, and they know that, they tell us the difference. Over the years, we've had this council, the students who have had difficulty in the past, maybe gotten in trouble, maybe have failed or whatever, they will tell you, if they've got seven classes, they'll go to, they're more apt to want to go to the ones where they have built a relationship with those teachers, and those teachers really care about their well-being and their academic future. So, that's what Destiny's talking about, not only the content, the ability to deliver content, but building those positive relationships with students. You know, it does make a difference. Ben, I know it's interesting, you know, you came here a couple of years ago from a district right down the road. Have you seen big differences in, you know, in your last district and this district, as far as the approach and how you've gotten your education?
Yeah, I feel like I've noticed a lot more involvement with the teachers and student relationships, and so the involvement's different.
So, you're saying we're a better district? You didn't mention names. I used to, I used to work there myself. I'm not going to say. Thank you, Ben, I appreciate it. I want to say thank you again to our student advisory council members for being here and advisory to the board. It's really a special thing that our board allows you to do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen, I think we're done.
We are, we are done. Just want to thank everybody for hanging in there. We've been here a couple hours in full room, which is always good.
An hour of student recognition and staff recognition, that's pretty cool.
That's extremely good. Extremely good. Thank you to elementary principals for being here. We appreciate y'all's efforts. Other than that, have a great rest of your week and month, and we will see you next month.
Thank you. Thank you all.